I'd like to call the reorganizational meeting of Little Falls Community Schools to order this January 4th, 2021, at 5:00 PM. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The district mission statement, Little Falls Community Schools promotes personal and academic excellence in a collaborative, safe, and engaging environment. Next item on our agenda is the administration of the oath of office to Julie Lemire, Doug Dahlberg, and Kelsey Herzog. And Steve's going to take it.
And if you three would stand, you can just stand where you're at. I'll read something and then I'll ask you at the very end to repeat something with me. But I do want to read what the school board member oath of office is all about. It's an honor that you were elected to help guide the education of our children's, of the education of our children in our community. As you recite the oath of office, in a minute here, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation from the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, you must be accountable to the community, you must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocates on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, you must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed and accepted the oath, the office and oath of office, I hereby allow you to publicly affirm your commitment to the oath of office. So if you could repeat after me, please? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
Of Independence School District Number 482.
Of Independence School District Number 482.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so if we're gonna have Jay can now head out. You two can come up here. Kathy has to stay up a little minute. So somebody can take Jay's spot, and then there's another chair over there for one of you for just a few moments. As Kathy, as the board chair, will do her last few duties.
Yeah, I'll go to item number five on our agenda, which is approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second by Mark, a motion by Brad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, 6.1, election of officers. And our first office that we're going to nominate is chairperson. So is there nomination for chairperson of Little Falls Community Schools?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Brad for the office of chairperson.
Okay, and this nomination does not require a second. Are there any other nominations for the school board chair? Are there any other nominations for the school board chair? Hearing none. Brad is now our chair by, what's the term?
By nomination.
By nomination. So I'll let Brad take over from here.
Thanks for the job.
I'm going for Kelsey. You don't want your name, right?
No. You always have to forget something in my age. Okay, next, we have to select a vice chair. Do I have any nominations for clerk?
I'll nominate Mark.
Okay, there's been a nomination of Mark for clerk. Going once.
Are there any other?
Are there any other nominations?
This isn't a bingo game.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. Mark, you've been appointed clerk. Okay, treasurer, any nominations for treasurer? You get the hard duty of signing the checks.
Yes, anyone can.
Doug, would you be willing to take on as treasurer?
Sure.
Okay, I will nominate Doug for treasurer for this year.
Okay, there have been a nomination for Doug for treasurer. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? No other nominations? So Doug, you'll become chairperson. A treasurer, I'm sorry. You can have both of them. All right, that must be impeachment. I like that. That's good. Well, I remember I gotta wear my glasses. That's why otherwise you can't see. Okay, the next action that we have is an establishment of board member remuneration. Currently, do I need to read that or just have everybody read it themselves or?
It should, yeah. It was in the, it was in everybody's agenda.
Okay. So anybody having looked at this or having looked at that, does anybody have any kind of motions or is everything there okay?
I'm fine with this, but I do have a question because last year there was a discussion of whatever the percentage was that we did for teachers and everybody that the board would start doing that too. But I went back and I couldn't find what we'd ever voted on. I think it remained as a discussion item. So for time and stuff, I would make a motion that we accept it the way it's printed here for this year.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept it the way it has been printed here. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, members of the board, following that discussion last year, I did prepare a document that had school board wages throughout the area. And we were squarely in the middle of where we should have been. Yep, and so I think it was at that point, we decided that that was not worthy of making any adjustment at that point based on where we were at. I can, I can do that again for this, for this year if you'd like to have that in your pocket to entertain for next year. Just provide me the guidance and I can do that.
Do we only vote on it at this time of the year, though, Steve, or can we?
You can, I mean, you can always vote on anything anytime. So that was something we wanted to change at some point.
Yeah.
Of course, the fiscal year runs and ends June 30th. So if, you know, again, from a budgetary standpoint, who are we gonna make any changes? We'd rather do it at that point as opposed to middle of the year. But that's certainly a document that we can prepare again for you.
Just as an information to the new board members and stuff, I've been on the board 10 years and we've never raised. And, and most of us, I guess, think that, you know, this is for the kids and we're all sensitive and that. But on the other hand, you'll notice that nobody ran in opposition to the people. And, and I mean, it's, it's up to us to think about that. I, I don't, I don't want to sway anybody one way or another, but that's information from the past. I, like I said, I've been a board member for 10 years and it's never been, never been raised.
Well, I'll, I'll work on that and provide that document to you by the end of our board meeting.
And I, it's, it, it, just that when us older people do die and go away, that we do have enough people to run to do this job. It's at $65 a week. I, I don't think anybody's getting rich. But that's just a matter of information. Okay, well, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of keeping what's written on the paper here for stipend for board members signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. The next one that's up is board member committee and other assignments. Generally, all of the people that are sitting here that have been here have always been assigned to committees. The only difference is we have a couple of new board members and we have a couple that have left us to do other things. So that leaves open some committee members or committee committeeships, is that what you would call it? Assignments. I don't want to, as a board chairman, just assign those to you. So what I would like for you guys to do and, and the people that have been here, if you're tired of the committee assignments that you have, or if you see something that really tweaks your interest from those that are open, if you either call Steve or me before the 11. Do we have listings of those that are open, Steve? Are they on?
Well, it would be any, I mean, it's in the agenda. So this is the entire list. So I, I would like to know if, you know, as a new board member, what you might be interested in.
Yeah.
If there's something that really interests you, because some, quite frankly, some of these assignments aren't really at the top of everyone's list. But we just need, we need bodies on certain assignments. So if there's certainly something that you're really interested in and want to invest your time, please let us know what those are and we'll, I, I know this board is cooperative enough to allow you to do what you want to pursue.
Yep. Amen.
Yep, so if you can get that to us maybe by Friday.
And I guess, if there's any people that are members that have been on here that would like to change something, also get that to Steve. If you're content with what you are, should they let you know that that's fine too, Steve? Okay. Any questions about that at all? So then we'll wait for the next board meeting to establish which committee assignments that all the board members will have. There generally, you're going to enjoy, you know, your assignments. They're, you know, they're really good things that we need them done as a school board. Okay, additional signatory for Pine Country Bank if needed is an action item.
And we will need it because of the officer lineup now. So this will have to be done.
So do I have a motion for additional signatory for Pine Country Bank?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Pine Country, no.
You might actually have to abstain. Yeah, I think you'll have to abstain from this vote.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Better than voting wrong.
Am I kicked off now?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Sharon. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the floor?
I guess for the record, I make it noted that I am abstaining from the vote.
Okay. All those in favor, oh, we haven't, we have to nominate somebody for, or?
No, it's already done.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And note that Doug abstained. Okay. Next, we have a presentation by Superintendent Jones in recognition of our outgoing board members. And as a board chair, I'd just like to say, I've enjoyed my 10 years with you guys. Gonna miss you. We've been a pretty good family for 10 years. But, so as board chair, I'd just like to say that. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Jones to, to.
I'd just like to comment that I planned to go away, but Brad's second word that he put in that sentence was die and go away. I think I'll skip the die part.
Kathy, Jay, can I have you come up there, please? At my age, I don't even remember that word, so. Well, we'd like to present you with our retirement swag. Kathy, if you can turn around and face Mr. Deal, I think. And so I'd like to, to address our outgoing two school board members. I've been here nine years and I've been privileged to work with Kathy and Jay for all of those nine years. Kathy's been a board member for 10 years after an illustrious teaching career in the district. And she has really served education through many, many factors. She continues to be an advocate for the Dr. Knight Elementary School, donating literally tens of thousands of dollars through her continuous plant sales to help kids further their education. And Kathy, you've been such a benefit for the school district and for our communities, and you would be greatly missed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jay, 16 years as a school board member. 18? Oh, then we've got the wrong number. We actually went and looked back, so we saw 16. So we're off to figure that out. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll get that figured out, 16 or 18. All we know is it's a lot of years at this point.
That'd be odd because I was off for two years and I got reappointed for two more years. And been elected ever since.
Okay.
So that was, that makes six years, and then three elections, which is 12 years. That adds up to 18, man.
Well, we'll get it figured out.
He used to be a math teacher.
Yeah, we'll get it figured out. Anyway, it's a lot of years that Jay has faithfully served this district as a school board member, but even more as, as a math teacher in this district. Coming from North Dakota and moving to the, to the central Minnesota area here in Little Falls. He's spent a good portion of his life, six children that he's brought through the school district. And, and just like Kathy, we, we continue to have Adamix and Spillums working for us in this school district, employing the, the youth of our, of our community with, with great education. And Jay, I couldn't be more proud to call you my friend, Kathy, you my friend tonight. And, and, and I just wish you the best as, as, as you hang up a tremendous career as an educator.
Whether I have to do it.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure they'll do very well.
Congratulations. We're gonna miss you guys.
It's not easier with Steve as a superintendent. When I first started out, first started out, we had to make
Cuts.
$3 million cuts a couple of years. It was tough going. And now he's not elected, he's been reappointed and been elected ever since. But, so you've got a good superintendent, good administrative board with him. So that really helped me. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great one.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Stay around, buddy.
Stay safe. That chair has cooled off.
It's not the hot seat.
Not the hot seat. You're not on the hot seat anymore. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so welcome to our newly elected board members and one that was reelected over there. All of you, welcome. And just want to make sure that you take advantage of all of the training sessions. Now, so far this year, they've been almost all knocked out, but there's, hopefully there'll be one in the summer. And you can take advantage of that. And if you need any explanation on any of that, we'll let you know. Then there's generally one in the fall. We belong to MREA, which is a rural school board group. And they have a lot of training sessions and topics that you might want to learn about because a lot of times we have to vote on them. So I'd recommend that. I know that we've all learned a lot on those sessions. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next, any public comments?
None.
None, okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have, so moved by Sharon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? The consent agenda for the new people is on there and we'd rather them go through that item by item. We just do that. So, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of accepting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All applied. Okay. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes. We'll also entertain a motion for that to approve the prior month's meeting minutes.
That wasn't part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So that all of those things have been approved through the consent agenda.
Okay, so we're on to?
Number 10.
10. I must have a different, a minor not numbered, Stephen.
On the second on this.
I don't, somehow or another, I pulled that out. Does anybody have another copy of the? Unless this is it here. I got it, I got it. Here it is. So we're on the reports from board members?
Yep.
Okay, do we have any reports from board members go around the room? We'll start with Sharon. No report? Doug?
No report.
No report?
Nothing.
Julie?
My report.
Oh my goodness, this could be a fast meeting. This would be one year. Okay, superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, welcome. I want to thank you again for your commitment to the community, to the children of District 482 in a very challenging time. We had our consultation with the Minnesota Department of Health and the regional support team today to hopefully finalize the action that the board took on Monday, December 21st, to bring our students back to school on January 11th and January 19th. We had a good conversation with the Minnesota Department of Health. We were asked to provide the, the data that they, that they wanted to hear that we felt justified our decision to push to bring students back into our buildings. They wanted to understand our mitigation approaches, what we've done to make sure that, that this was a safe place for our students and faculty to be. I, I did share with them that through the course since September 22nd, we've had 104 cases of COVID affect a school personnel, whether it's a staff member or a student. But of that 104, not one of those cases through tracing, either by the Department of Health or by the county public health, has shown that it was contracted or spread at school. And that's the unifying factor. And the, the, one of the people from the Department of Health actually said during the consult that when they were working on this in July and August, it was their fear that schools would be the spreaders. And what they learned is that schools are not the spreaders. And in fact, schools are the safer place for, for students and faculty to be. And I thought that was a great message to go on top of our plea to allow us to return to school. And at the end of the meeting, we were, we were provided the, the, the go ahead to do just that. So we officially now will be coming back to school on January 11th with our preschool and elementary. And on January 19th with our secondary students. We're really excited about that. The case rate today in the county was 34.44, which is still really, really good. It's the lowest it's been since October 1st. To put that in perspective, so that's nearly 100 days. We're seeing our lowest rates in the county. Our Department of Health number at 63 from New Year's Eve is the lowest it's been in about eight weeks. So things are looking really good in terms of where we're at. Now we have to just be careful and make sure that we continue to do the things that we know that we can do here. As I said before, today was the first day of sports. Seven activities started today. And with that seven sports, there was about, and I'm not, I'm not exaggerating here, about 55 pages worth of documentation from the Department of Health, Minnesota State High School, of guidelines and recommendations and some requirements that we have to do in order to provide the, the best and safest protocols for, for activities to, to go on. We feel really confident that we will do just that. The one piece we do not know yet is spectators. That has not been announced officially by the state high school league, one way or another. So we do know that the first contest can take place on January 14th. We don't know yet if, if spectators will be allowed. We anticipate that we'll learn that this week. And should it be something similar to what took place in the fall, especially indoors like we, we did in volleyball, we feel very safe in what we offer here in volleyball to, to, to provide a safe, safe and worthwhile place for people to watch, watch the sport as well as for the athletes to participate in. We do know that barring a doctor's note, that, that students in, in at least five of the sports will have to wear a face mask at all times. We're still unsure about cross-country skiing and wrestling at this point, what the, what the, the ultimate face mask protocol will be. But from everything that we are hearing, we are seeing nothing that, that changes that for any of the other sports, which will make things obviously a little bit more challenging and interesting. They're practicing in pods to exceed no more than 25 at a time. When we pick up kids on Monday morning, we will have seating charts on all of our buses, not for the usual reasons that you have seating charts on buses, but for self or contract tracing protocols. Should someone on a bus get it? If our seating charts are accurate, we should be able to really isolate the number of kids impacted by the, by the quarantine. The other good news is that on the 31 buses that we have now, plus our own buses in the district, we now have cameras, systems set up. So we'll be able to validate that things are being done correctly. In addition, our activities will be the same way. They will have seating charts that the coaches will be responsible for, again, for the same reason, to try and minimize any kind of exposure that will happen. We've learned a lot since July, and we feel that we're ready for the challenge in front of us to, to, to bring our kids and, and faculty back into the buildings in a, in a safe and healthy manner. So I'm really excited about that. I, I, I know that our, our families are certainly excited about that. And I know that our staff are, are welcome to see kids back in the buildings again. So, do you have any questions? I'll certainly entertain those.
Out of curiosity, what does the participation look like for the winter sports? Is there just as many kids going out for them or is there fear of?
The initial signup looked really good. We actually saw a bump in the number of the fall sports. And so I, today is the first day. And those of you may or may not know, but our activities director is the head girls' basketball coach this year. He's doing it for one year. My hope was to have him here next week. He has practice scheduled at that time. So hopefully we'll get a written report that we can share with you because we all have interest in, in what our participation pieces are for our kids.
Steve, having a granddaughter that played in the fall, I know that the school district allowed kids to drive to games. And that, is that still the policy?
Yep, so it'll go out. Actually, we finalized the document on Friday. We updated it to the latest state high school league and MDE and MDH guidelines. And that will go out again. And again, we don't necessarily want or, we don't like it, but at the same time, we understand it at this point, that we feel that that's a family choice. And it has everything to do with infection and safety and health. Um, and it has everything to do with infection and safety and health. Um, and so, um, yes, to answer your question, that, that will still be out there, that process will be out there, but it will follow. It, it's not, it's not a, a, a haphazardly done, we know who's doing what, um, and they are not transporting anybody else. Um, and it's by themselves, um, and the parents are fully aware of it, so.
And I think one of the reasons why we did have a busload of soccer kids that went out, and because they were all on the same bus, all of that whole group had to quarantine.
Yeah, but that has changed now, uh, because even though we, we, we did have kids isolated on that bus, at that time, the guidelines were more than a half an hour, the whole bus was gone, including the driver. That has now been changed to the close contact tracing, which is why the seating charts are so much more important, so. Um, if, if, if we have a child on a bus that gets it, there's a six feet rule in front, back and on the side, those are the kids that are impacted and, and quarantined, not the whole bus. We also have the six feet, um, difference between the driver and the first child. So the driver will not end up having to quarantine if someone on his or her bus would get it as well. So, again, like I said, we've gotten smarter, we've learned a lot as we've gone through this. Um, but the one thing we have learned is that next week it will change somewhere along the line and, and then we'll just adjust accordingly.
Is plexiglass an option with drivers?
No, it'll be from, uh, um, the, uh, uh, state patrol does not want that.
Okay.
Does not want plexiglass on a bus, just like curtains or anything else.
Okay.
To separate, so, um, they don't want drivers to have to wear shields either, um, for that very same reason. So that's why the six feet piece was, was put into place.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And just, uh, for a little bit of information, the reason we ended up going to the current one that we had was we had up to sixty employees that had to be quarantined and we had no cooks at two schools, we had, it, so it wasn't necessarily the kids, everybody thinks the kids were fine, but if you got sixty employees out for three weeks or two weeks, it's, it was just too difficult, we couldn't staff our, our institution, uh, place, so. Anything else?
No.
Thank you, um, I will receive a, uh, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Sharon, do we have a second to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, meeting is adjourned.